Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand for that, and follow it up with the invocation from Senior Pastor Michael Lusk from the First Baptist Church in Old Town Bellevue.
Father, we come before you this evening, and we stop to acknowledge that you are God. Beside you, there is no other. Father, tonight, we thank you and praise you for your goodness. We thank you for your graciousness. Father, we thank you for your provision in our lives and in our city. Father, tonight, we pray for your favor upon our leaders and upon our city. Lord, we pray that you would give them wisdom as they meet tonight to discuss the business of the city. Lord, pray that you would guide them, that you would direct them. Pray, Father, that you would guide their steps, that you would give them wisdom as they as they meet together tonight. Father, we pray for vision for our leaders, a vision for this city, that you would continue to guide them in that. Lord, we pray for unity within our city. Father, we thank you for the many ways that we see people are being kind and acts of kindness. Lord, we pray that you would continue to draw our hearts together, that we would continue to love our neighbors as ourself. And, Lord, that we would be a city that is thriving. We pray, Father, for unity amongst our businesses, our churches, our schools. What I pray, that we would all partner together to build a great and awesome city here in Bellevue. Lord, Father, tonight, we pray for your blessing. We continue to pray for your protection. And, Lord, we pray, most of all, that you would be exalted, that you would be glorified in this place. We pray these things in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Lusk. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 5A, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Please vote.
Councilman Preister, is yours coming through?
I vote yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, but I want to remove item 5B3 from the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Cook, second by Preister, to remove item 5B from the consent. Is that correct?
The motion would be to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 5B3.
Okay, we'll approve the motions to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 5B. Save G.
Three.
Three. 5B3. That was by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, so 5B3 is approval of September 7th, 2021, City Council minutes. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve 5B3.
I'll second.
Then I'd like to make an amendment. And the amendment is, when we approved and authorized the mayor to sign the Bellevue Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for a term of October 1st, 2021, through September 30th, 2025, that needs to be corrected to, it should be October 1st, 2021, through September 30th of 2024. So, we're only changing the last year of 2025, and we're making it 2024.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion to amend 5B3, as stated by Councilman Cook, and that was seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting in for it. Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to approve 5B3 as amended now. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7, we have no special presentations this evening. Item 8, no organizational matters this evening. Item 9, approved citizen communication. 9A, improper replacement slash repair of culvert in city right-of-way from Chris and Marnie Strickland. I believe there's David Levi here from Barrett Homes. So, if you'd please announce your name, sign in your address as well, and then you have about five minutes.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council members. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm. Marnie Strickland is here with me. Her husband, Chris, is in the back. I signed in before the meeting because I've done this enough times to know to avoid that awkward pause while while somebody writes their name. So, I was on top of that. So, I will try and be brief. Mayor, your description of the item and the description on the agenda is accurate. A little bit of history. The Stricklands live on Camp Gifford Road, which is a little bit of a more rural part of Bellevue. For a long time, they had basically a road ditch next to the road where the water would run. That ditch got filled in, and in 2019, in the winter of 2019, basically flooded their property, causing quite a bit of damage to their yard, took out some retaining walls. It was a big deal. In the summer of 2019, the city of Bellevue very graciously came and installed a culvert across their property. They have two driveways, and the culvert spans the two driveways. Since then, the culvert had become damaged and had ceased to work, and so one, the culvert under one of the driveways is great, under the other one, it doesn't work. And so, there's continues to be a flooding issue. During the spring or early summer of this year, Marnie engaged with the city to try and get the city to repair that culvert. I then also engaged with the city. There are really two perspectives to this, and they both may have some merit. Like any story, there are two sides, right? If you have kids, there might even be three sides. The city's position is that the Stricklands damaged the culvert themselves by having heavy dump trucks bringing dirt to their property drive over the culvert. At some point during our discussions with the city, the city asked that we get an engineering report about the culvert, which the Stricklands did. They hired Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner at significant expense to them personally to come and look at the culvert. And I'll read just a little bit from Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner's report, which we did then provide to the city. And this is dated June 25th. Attached is a copy of a page from the quote ADS Inc. Drainage Handbook, Chapter 5-0 Installation. Page 513 of the handbook contains figure 5-2, Typical Backfill Structure Attached. The figure indicates the need for a structural bedding as well as a minimum cover over the pipe of 12 inches of material. Our investigation revealed the lack of both of these conditions. So, the engineer concluded that the culvert was not properly installed. We contend that if the culvert had been properly installed, the dump trucks that drove over it, or the trucks with dirt, would not have damaged it. Again, there are two competing theories of why the culvert is damaged. The Stricklands would like to have the culvert replaced with a new culvert that's properly installed. We had gone back and forth quite a bit with the city. We appreciate all that. At one point, the city had said, you know, you replace the culvert, and we'll come do some grading. We eventually responded and said, how about if the Stricklands pay for the culvert and the new culvert, and the city installs the new culvert? At that point, we were basically told, no, thanks, but no, thanks. Our prior compromise offer is off the table because you didn't accept it, and you responded with further discussion. We felt like that. That didn't feel quite right, and it didn't get us to the result that the Stricklands think is fair. They're offering a compromise. They're willing to kind of split the difference on this. And that's what we're asking the council for tonight, is to direct appropriate city staff to work with them to get the culvert issue fixed. Again, the, our compromise offer remains. They would pay for the culvert if the city would install it. You know, in compliance with the appropriate engineering standards, of course. So, that's what we have. We appreciate the time. Happy to answer any questions. Marnie, anything you want to add?
I don't. You covered everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions? Okay. No questions from, all right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. What is the process from here? Will we hear back from somebody?
Administration will review your comments and respond accordingly.
Very good. Thank you.
Item 10 is liquor licenses. 10A, recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Kinsey A. Boselman as the new manager for Boselman's Pump and Pantry LLC doing business as Pump and Pantry 50 at 3605 Summit Plaza Drive, Bellevue. And I will open that up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the application? Anyone here for or against 10A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a comment was if the new manager was here, they list the address in Grand Island. I was going to ask him if they lived in the area of Bellevue or this place, but they're not here, so they would not be able to answer it. So, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Kinsey A. Boselman as a new manager for Boselman's Pump and Pantry LLC doing business as Pump and Pantry 50 at 3605 Summit Plaza Drive in Bellevue.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading. 11A, ordinance number 4050, and ordinance to amend Section 12-57 through 12-58 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4050, and ordinance to amend Section 12-57 through 12-58 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks to repeal all previous versions of the same, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve ordinance number 4050.
Second.
Motion by Burns. Seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. 12A, ordinance number 4053, request to amend Sections 5.27 ML Light Manufacturing and 5.28 MH Heavy Manufacturing. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the addition of recycling collection and processing facilities as a permitted use. Applicants, Waste Connections of Nebraska Inc. and City of Bellevue. Case number 164. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4053, and ordinance to amend Section 5.27 and 5.28 of ordinance number 3619 Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to permitted uses in the ML Light Manufacturing and MH Heavy Manufacturing zoning districts to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you, and I will open for public hearing, and I'll start with the applicant, if the applicant's here and wants to talk. Please state your name and address and sign in, please.
I will.
Have five minutes.
My name is Steve Mossman. I'm an attorney with Mattson-Ricketts Law Firm. It's nice to be here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. I represent Waste Connections of Nebraska Inc., and that this proposal, the next item on the agenda, 11B, are interrelated, but I understand we have to have two formal public hearings. In my mind, we've got a very exciting proposal for the city of Bellevue, and I have John Love, the Regional Vice President of Waste Connections, and Kim Lewick, who is the district manager, and John's going to kind of kick this off and tell you about the project.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is John Love with Papillion Sanitation, and I will sign in here momentarily. It's exciting just to give you a quick overview of the facility that we have planned. Currently, Papillion Sanitation is based out of Highway 370 and Highway 50. We have another district located in Glenwood, Iowa, and we'd like to take this opportunity to combine the districts into one facility essentially at the Fort Crook and Fairview Road intersection. This would be a trucking hub, which means trucks would be parked and maintained, as well as carts and containers, as well as an administrative office for customer service representatives, accounting folks, division folks, and the like. And with a future potential component of a recycling center, if and when that would be economically feasible and needed by the community, certainly not in Phase 1 of our plans. And finally, it would employ the combined district. It would be about 175 employees. So, a great opportunity for us to upgrade our facilities and be in a city where we, City of Bellevue is our largest municipal contract, which would be very close to the action, and it by no means is any type of transfer station or landfill. Its essential function is a trucking hub. Glad to answer any questions or provide more details. Thank you.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Get both of them. Thank you.
Nope, they're both off now.
Just want to, you said it's mainly a hub, and you're combining two sites into one location, have more employees. This will replace your existing facility, is that what?
Yes, sir, it would. It would. We would sell the facility at Highway 50 and 370. We're just landlocked there and not enough room, so this would be our primary base of operation.
Okay. When I first read it, I was thinking this was a complete recycling center rather than a transfer or the hub that you're talking about. So, you won't, at this point at least, be doing any recycling. It'll just, trucks will come in, and then it'll take the material back out in a different truck or a different form.
Actually, no garbage will come to this site or recycling. After the trucks complete their routes and they empty it, whether it be a transfer station, landfill, or recycling center, they come back to this facility for maintenance and overnight parking. So, no material comes to this site unless, in the future, we were to build a recycling center, in which case recycling material would come in totally enclosed in a building and be processed and then shipped out.
Okay. Well, I was hopeful for more recycling, but I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm glad you're coming down to Bellevue. And since Bellevue has the main contract of the cities and Papillion doesn't, it's nice to have that. And that's a great site for you that may not be good for a whole lot of other things.
Yes, sir. We agree. We're excited to hopefully be close to closing on it.
And I appreciate the good service that we've gotten from Papillion Sanitation and Waste Connections, too.
Thank you very much.
And had you been doing recycling, I'm going to go through this anyway because I think it's important. At the recent Nebraska State Fair, there was a student, an FFA student, and that student did a study and a report. It was Whitley Rut of Arthur, Nebraska, out in the Sand Hills. And the study was on sand, interestingly enough. It says, "Sand is one of the most mined natural resources in the world, but also the world is facing a shortage of sand that is used in the construction industry, road building, glass production, and for many other vital products." Humans are extracting more sand three times faster than nature can replenish it. And one of the products that sand is made into are roofing shingles. And I'll plant the seed, but we put a whole lot of roofing shingles out into landfills. And so, if you do start a recycling center, recycling shingles, I mean, we think of, I, this was never on my radar. I never thought we were using up more sand in the world than what the earth can produce. But it's a student right here in Nebraska that's coming up with some of the data. So, anyway, I don't want to ask any more questions on recycling since that's not what you're really doing, but thank you, John.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with you moving, combining both, closing the other locations and moving them to Bellevue, how do we propose to get it changed to Bellevue sanitation versus Papillion sanitation?
Interestingly enough, we were discussing that prior to this meeting. I'm not sure I have a good answer for you.
Okay.
Other than, we have quite a bit of brand recognition with Papillion Sanitation, although it creates quite the discussion on the only service Papillion
Right.
city limits, so we debate this often. And I'm not exactly sure where the future is, but we are considering potentially changing the name.
We just put the bug in your ear. That's all we need to do. Tammy, I have a question for you, that if they do decide to build the recycling center, what's the process that they go through with planning? Do we have to rezone it again, or do they just have to get your approval, or how's that happen?
That's what these two requests are for this evening. So, the text amendment puts the language in the ML zoning district. The next item on the agenda is they are requesting a change of zone to Light Manufacturing or ML. So, if the city council does in fact approve that rezoning, that would clear the way for them to come in with the building permit process and move forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm sleeping. So, you're purchasing enough land. You're looking at purchasing enough land that would also fit Phase 2 of a recycle center?
Yes, sir.
So, you're, so it's not like later down the road, you're going to buy the land next to it or cross the street and say, let's rezone it and do that?
No, sir. Currently, we're on about 10 acres for the trucking company at our current location. This facility or this land purchase would be 25 acres. So, it gives us plenty of room for expansion, including a recycling center.
And the recycling center, Tammy, would have to be all done indoors?
That is correct. Based on the existing performance standard, we have an ML and MH zoning. It would require everything to be indoors, and that's what Papillion Sanitation is looking to do, anyway.
In that, Tammy, in that general area, there's a lot of other farmland and some land that just, I think, sits as dirt. Because I think they added dirt there. So, there's other properties on the north side of Fairview. There's other properties on the south side of Fairview. What is the city's intention of that area to be looked at? Is there going to be homes, more homes, more apartments, or is it going to be industrial? And?
The future land use map shows that entire area as being light industrial. So, that's what I foresee happening in that area. You will not have residential or multifamily residential near that intersection.
We're talking of pretty much all the current land that is vacant, from pretty much the airbase, Air Force Base to Normandy?
Correct.
75 to the rendering plant to the east? Okay.
I'd say with the exception of Iskies Land, maybe right east of Haida Hills.
Correct. I'm talking east of Highway 75.
Yes.
So, yeah, nothing west of Highway 75, but east of Highway 75. The areas immediately adjacent to this particular intersection, they're slated for industrial.
So, if we were looking at Fairview and Fort Crook Road, we'd pretty much say that's all going to be pretty much light industrial?
That's how the future land use map has it, yes.
I would also like to second what Councilmember Welch said. You guys, I think, our trash service is excellent. I struggle with Papillion on the side of your trucks. Now, I don't know if I want Bellevue on there. No, I'm just kidding you. But I just truly, you guys do a great job.
Well, sincerely.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, don't go far in case we have some more questions, but the public hearing is open, so if there's anybody else here that would like to speak regarding ordinance number 4053, please come forward. Anybody for or against ordinance number 4053, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and that third reading will be October 5th, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you for coming out. Item 12B, ordinance number 4054, request to rezone lots 12B and 13C, south of the drainage ditch Butterfields subdivision, located in the northeast quarter of Section 10, township 13 North, range 13 East. Sarpy County, Nebraska, tax lot 14, except that part taken for highway right-of-way and part of vacated state right-of-way in the east half of the east half in the southeast quarter. state right-of-way in the east half of the east half, in the southeast corridor adjacent to tax lot fourteen, all located in the southeast corridor of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirteen east, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and part of vacated state right-of-way in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, west of Fort Crook Road South, located in the southwest quarter of section eleven, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P. M., Sarpy County, Nebraska, from FX and BNH to ML for the purpose of light industrial development. Applicant, Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc., general location, Fairview Road and Fort Crook Road South. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-five-four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Okay, thank you. And I will open the public hearing for twelve B, ordinance number four-zero-five-fours.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Mossman, again, representing Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc. And we would just incorporate our previous comments and answers to questions and see if any members of the council or staff had any further questions on this one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public hearing is still open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four-zero-five-four? If so, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four-zero-five-four? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and that third reading and vote will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item twelve C, ordinance number four-zero-five-five, request to amend sections two dot two-two. Definitions, five dot two-seven ML light manufacturing district, five dot two-eight MH heavy manufacturing district, five dot three-five HCO, Highway thirty-four corridor overlay district, and Article eight supplement regulations supplemental regulations, city of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding solar energy. Applicant, city of Bellevue, case number one-six-five. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four-zero-five-five, an ordinance to amend sections two point two-two, five point two-seven, five point two-eight, and five point three-five, and Article eight of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, the Bellevue zoning ordinance, relating to definitions, permitted uses in the ML light manufacturing, MH heavy manufacturing, and HCO, Highway thirty-four corridor overlay zoning districts, and supplemental regulations regarding solar energy to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to prove provide an effective date of this ordinance and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I will open up ordinance number four-zero-five-five for public hearing. If there is anyone here to speak, please come forward. Okay, just some reminders, we have several public hearings. We'll limit it to five minutes. If if you hear a little buzzer going off behind you, just wrap it up in a few seconds and we'll be good. Please announce your name and address and sign in.
Good evening. Michaela Valentine, OPPD. I have some documents to pass out. Who would like to receive those for the council? I thought it might make it easier on you if I handed out a redline version of OPPD's proposed changes to the current version of the solar regulations. As a reminder, I was before you on June fifteenth when you opened the resolution, and I've been working with Bree and Annie and Tammy all along and also attended the planning commission meeting to offer some proposed changes. And this is our second version of our proposed changes to the current version of the regulations that are before you. They've been reviewed by an engineering team that are subject matter experts in the area of solar panels and installation of solar panels. And so what you have before you, if everyone has a copy now, is a picture of a solar panel. And I want to just point out, I think everybody can read the comments that are provided in red, which are suggested changes, but there's two that I want to make sure I draw to your attention. And the first one is the picture that you have before you are what are called P-tos or they're double stacked panels. They could be up to eight feet. And so one of the things we wanted to ask you to revisit was the maximum height on commercial solar conservation systems, to move that to twenty-five feet as we had previously requested. And here's why. When you look at those panels that are double stacked, they can be up to eight feet long. So you've got two eight-feet panels that are double stacked, that's sixteen feet. And then there is a possibility that the racking system that goes in the ground can be anywhere from four to six feet. So you're right around twenty to twenty-four feet. And so we're just asking you to please consider moving the maximum height on the commercial solar systems back to twenty-five feet as we previously recommended. Any questions on that?
Questions?
Questions from anyone? And then the second one that I want to draw your attention to is we've been asking jurisdictions as we're going before them to put a force majeure clause in to the solar regulations just for acts of God as we continue to have climate change. We are having crazy weather. We are having all sorts of incidents happen. So in case somebody cannot perform on the contract and it's totally beyond them to be able to do that, we recommend putting that language in. The rest of it's pretty self-explanatory, and everybody who would be making changes here can see that before them. So unless you have questions on the other comments that we've provided, I'll take any other general questions.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Okay, all right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing is open for ordinance number four-zero-five-five. Anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward. Anybody for or against ordinance number four-zero-five-five? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. That third reading and vote will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P. M. here in the council chambers.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, real quick, just a little bit of background for the council in regards to the height. Ms. Valentine was at our planning commission meeting, and we did have a lot of discussions centered around height. What the planning commission ultimately recommended is the language you have in your version of the ordinance. They left it at fifteen feet, but gave an exception. Said exceptions may be granted within the conditional use permit in cases when topography, floodplain, or other natural elements of the natural landscape interfere with the ability to meet the foregoing height restrictions. That language was taken specifically from the Sarpy County ordinance that was recently passed, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of background of where that conversation went and the recommendation from planning commission.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counselman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Palm, with that exception then or exemption, how would that work? If they wanted to go to twenty-five feet, what would be the process?
So in the proposed regulations, the solar would be done through a conditional use permit. So ultimately, that would have to be reviewed and approved by the city council, and there would be a conditional use permit agreement. So that would be part of that process. So if an exception was to be granted, that would be written into that agreement.
So there would be an additional step because of the public the the permit, I believe, would have to go back through the planning commission?
Well, it's not an additional step just because based on the regulations, it would have to be a conditional use permit. So that would be part of that process. So if there was a reason for an exception, there was an exception based on that proposed language, then that's something that could be written into the conditional use permit process. So that would be provided with all of the materials at the time that the application was made.
Since the the zoning on the area would allow for industrial uses, and this would be one that would be permitted as we're about to approve, hopefully about to approve, is there a reason that you only went with fifteen feet rather than twenty-five?
When we looked at several ordinances, when we researched, legal and planning staff looked at many ordinances locally and nationally, there's numbers that are all over the board.
Right.
A lot of what we saw was pretty much fifteen to twenty feet in height. That's kind of what the discussion at Planning Commission centered around. We proposed fifteen, knowing it would be a point of discussion, and Planning Commission recommended the fifteen with the exception. So with the possibility that, yes, there there could be instances in which there could be more height than fifteen feet.
Okay, thank you for that. And thank you for working with OPPD, Ms. Valentine, Michaela, and taking the input. Of the other things on the list, you only commented on one. Do you have comments on? Do you have a copy of that, I think?
I do, and I appreciate Ms. Valentine did email me earlier today, so I had a chance to look at it, and I provided it to legal as well. Honestly, I don't have an issue with any of that language. I think it's fairly straightforward. You know, again, just have to probably decide what the council is comfortable with as far as height.
So all of the other ones, you're amenable to? The height one is a policy decision, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. So we'd have to have an amendment that would have to be introduced with the other thing?
Yeah, how it's been presented is how it was came out of Planning Commission, how they recommended it. So yes, we would just have to make that change in the ordinance if the city council wanted to change it.
Okay.
I assume that would be part of the motion or the approval process.
All right. And thank you very much. Councilwoman Welch?
So Ms. Valentine, I do have a question. Ms. Palm, you said most of them were at fifteen to twenty when you've looked across kind of across the board. The reason that you want to go to twenty-five?
The reason that we want to go to twenty-five is in the picture that's before you. The engineers, which I often get the opportunity to work with engineers, they're a different breed of people. They are.
Sister, you're talking to one, so be careful.
They are thinking way into the future, right? Like what the technology could be, and they're trying to plan for that. So if we are in the middle of a project, that we would not have to come back and then secure additional, you know, anything additional in the regulations for that. And I know there's an exception process. They're aware of that as well. They've seen two versions of the proposed regulations, but they felt really strongly that we should bring that back up. And as you can see in that picture, those are panels that are double stacked. And the engineer who's the subject matter expert on this, he believes that panel sizes, the length of them will reach eight feet shortly. And so he doesn't want it to have to be a thing where you pass one version of it and then come back and pass another. He knows there's an exception of it in the in the ordinance, but he feels very strongly that we need to bring that back up.
And Tammy, you're okay with it going to twenty-five if necessary?
I I think that's a decision that the council ultimately has to make. So I mean, yeah, whatever you folks decide is obviously what we will put in the ordinance.
But planning is is okay with the exception? Is that what I'm understanding or not?
I don't have any problem with the exception, no. You know, as far as what's the most acceptable height, again, it it varies out there. Like I said before, what we looked at, a lot of them in the area, I mean, Ms. Valentine, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are are probably between fifteen and twenty feet now. The other thing is, yes, we know that once these get passed, this is always going to be a living, breathing document. So, you know, at some point in the future, as we go through and we do more of these conditional use permits, you know, we'll probably at some point have to come back and do amendments based on technology or experience. So yes, I mean, ultimately, the city council will have to make a decision what they think is fair on height.
Okay.
And I would I would just say it's a future-ready posture. I just don't know how far into the future they're considering that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So Councilwoman Welch, why don't you just collect more sun in a smaller panel, figure that out?
I'll take that project on, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we did close the public hearing, and I did announce that third reading will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Move to twelve D, ordinance number four-zero-five-six, request to rezone lots one and two, Whispering Timber Estates replat seven, being a replat of lot one oh six, Whispering Timber Estates, lot one, Whispering Timber Estates replat six, and lot two A one, Fair Hill Edition, from AG RE RS dash eighty-four dash PS to RE and RS dash eighty-four dash PS for the purpose of existing residential development and small subdivision plat lots one and two. Whispering Timber Estates replat seven. Applicants are Todd Santoro and Greg Dennis. General location is Hickory Circle and Child's Road East. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-five-six, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Hickory Circle and Child's Road East, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And I am going to open the public hearing. It'll let Tammy, I think she's got some information to share.
Sure.
But she can get started, but the public hearing is open when she finishes here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I kind of wanted to summarize the project. I think that there was some confusion at Planning Commission. Obviously, we have a lot of interested neighbors in this request. Basically, what this is, is Mr. Santoro and Mr. Dennis are requesting to take four parcels and combine those into two parcels. So currently, there's four existing parcels. This request would combine them, and we would end up with two lots. It does not create any additional buildable residential lots. Obviously, there's concern with the neighbors that there's that there would be additional development in this area. I definitely share that concern, but this, in fact, would limit the potential development. Proposed lot one is Mr. Santoro's current single-family residence. It's already developed. He wouldn't be able to develop any additional residences off of that lot. The other lot, proposed lot two, would be owned by Mr. and Mrs. Dennis. Currently, they have a vacant lot there. They would be combining an additional vacant lot with their existing lot. Again, does not create any additional buildable lots. It actually limits the amount of development that could happen in this area.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing, so if the applicant would like to come forward and add anything, they're certainly welcome to, but the public hearing is open on ordinance number four-zero-five-six.
Greg Dennis, I live at nine oh eight Camp Gifford Road. Good evening.
Todd Santoro, sixteen oh six Camp Gifford.
Basically, we live at lot one oh seven, which is this small little area to the lower right. And recently, in February of of this year, we purchased lot one oh six, which was directly to the north of us. When this lot behind me, it's directly behind our house, became available, we negotiated a price, and I bought this lot through Todd. And then, of course, it was zoned ag, so it had to be split, and his property went across the other side of the road. So I'm just looking to to purchase that, basically, one acre lot that's behind my house. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay.
How y'all doing? I didn't fill out your address. When we purchased the other parcel, we knew at some point we were going to want to split up these two lots that are completely separate anyway, which is the only reason that the end of our property, we didn't bring into one to one larger parcel. Now we're just finishing that off. We're actually trying to make it, as Tammy said, basically impossible for anybody to develop, that it stays woods and fields and that the neighborhood can enjoy it. Nothing housing, the only housing thing we considered and we talked to Tammy about was the potential to put a buildable lot at the end of the parcel where it hits Child's Road. Planning came because we wanted to block it off from any development ever. Tammy came back and said, hey, we'd prefer to keep that for water or something like that. All good. It'll never be built on. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is open, so if there's anyone here that would like to speak regarding ordinance number four-zero-five-five-four or against, please come forward. Sorry, I read the wrong ordinance. It's ordinance number four-zero-five-six. Public hearing is open for ordinance number four-zero-five-six.
Gary and Kathleen Jacobs, that will be in the record.
Okay, I do want to make a note that Gary and Kathleen Jacobs did some. Okay, I do want to make a note that, uh, Gary and Kathleen Jacobs did submit a letter in writing. Uh, they couldn't make it this evening, so we will enter that in the record. Each council member, I believe, has a, has that in front of them right now. So public hearing is still open for ordinance number four zero five six.
Mr. Mayor? Was, was, or Tammy, whatever, was this, when this area was developed, was the lots that they're trying to combine, was it just when it was developed, it was lots that they just couldn't build on and so that's why it was never developed in the past?
I assume so. Um, the Whispering Timbers Estate plat dates back to nineteen seventy-six, so I can't speak to what the idea was back then. Um, but it's a drainage way. Um, the property, some of this property was previously owned by the city, um, and it was not ever developed or done anything with. Uh, Mr. Santoro purchased it from the city several years ago. Um, and like he previously said, he's just kind of cleaning up parcels that have been hanging out there. But it is a drainage way, in my opinion. The bulk of it is not buildable because of that, uh, because of the drainage that flows out of Fontaineau Forest and, um, those areas. So in my mind, this is the best possible use of the property.
Cause if it was developed in the seventies, you'd have thought it would have been built on by now, obviously, if it was, if it was buildable.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, still have the public hearing open, so if nobody else is coming forward, I will close the public hearing now on ordinance number four zero five six. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to twelve D one, small subdivision. Sorry, the third reading on ordinance number four zero five six will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P M here in the council chambers. Now, we will go to twelve D one, small subdivision plat lots one and two, Whispering Timber Estates replat seven. Just needed to read that, there's no action required. Move to twelve E, ordinance number four zero five seven. A comprehensive ordinance reflecting pay ranges covered under collective bargaining agreements and unclassified positions. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five seven, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number forty thirty-eight, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open, uh, item twelve E, ordinance number four zero five seven, up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four zero five seven? Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading and vote will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four zero five eight, an ordinance amending Article one, Chapter twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding new sections twenty dash fifteen through twenty dash twenty regarding additional offenses. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five eight, an ordinance to amend Article one, Chapter twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding new sections twenty dash fifteen through twenty dash twenty regarding additional offenses and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. Third reading and vote will be October fifth, two thou- am I on the right one? Oh, thirteen, sorry. So the second reading and public hearing on ordinance number four zero five eight will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four zero five nine, an ordinance to repeal Article six, Chapter nineteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding noise control. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five nine, an ordinance to repeal Article six, Chapter nineteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding noise control and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P M here in the council chambers. Thirteen C, ordinance number four zero six zero, an ordinance to amend the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding application for permit licenses and examination requirements. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number forty sixty, an ordinance to amend Article two, Chapter twenty-seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending Section twenty-seven dash twenty-seven, Section twenty dash twenty-eight, and Section twenty-seven dash thirty-four regarding application for plumbing licenses and examination requirements and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P M here in the chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structures at thirty-six thirty-six Edna Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one four seven. And I will open it up for public hearing and we will start with, uh, Mike Christianson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and everyone. I got a sh- short film clip I'd like to show everyone and then be happy to answer any questions. Need to fill to put it up on top. There we go. This property is sustained damage from a fire in August of twenty nineteen and has pretty much remained in the same condition since then. The part you're looking at was, uh, precursively hanging for approximately four months after the fact, and we did end up demolishing the tu- upper half just to bring the h- house into a safer condition. Uh, since that time, there's been no action as far as obtaining any permits or any effort to repair the property or move forward with, uh, bringing it back into a habitable condition. The pictures that you're seeing right now is the way it sits at this time. Uh, continues to deteriorate from the weather. Um, it's pretty much open, even the older portion of the house, the har- uh, tarps have begun to deteriorate. And the rainwater and snow, uh, pretty much have infiltrated that portion of the house also. Along with this back section where it's wind, wind blown and wind-driven snow. This is part of the addition that sustained most of the fire, um, and remains in this condition. Considered a public nuisance at this point and request it to be torn down.
Good, thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
Um, Mike, isn't, didn't we have a, um, hearing on this one when they, about the si- they were doing a sidewalk and this was the addition? Is this the same house where he was building this addition for his mom to move in or something?
No, this is-
Different house, okay. And so have the, have, obviously, based on the pictures, the people have just abandoned it and they've had no communication with you or anything?
I was only made able to make contact a couple times and that was to try to bring it into a safer condition and that did not happen. Uh, the permits department ended up hiring a contractor to remove that upper portion, just to bring it into a safer condition because it was precursiously hanging over the, the neighbors in the lot.
Okay, so it feels like they've abandoned the property and we just really don't have a choice at this moment?
He still has ownership, but he's not making any effort for repairs.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Preister?
And that was part of my question too, Mike. In terms of any contact, as of today, he has not responded to the notification or the meeting tonight, the condemnation, nothing?
I believe that one of the permit texts received a call that he had inquired about obtaining a demolition permit and what the requirements were. And that's as far as it went.
Okay, it has been sitting there looking bad and a, a risk in the neighborhood and I, I agree with what you're doing.
Okay, thanks, Mike. The public hearing is open. Anybody else? Please state your name and address.
Mayor, Council, Paul Contreras, thirty-six thirty-two, Edna Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm the neighbor just east of thirty-six thirty-six. I got, just jotted down something real quick. Leaving work that day, I get a call from my youngest daughter, Ava, she was eleven years old at the time. I'm driving home, she's calling me, the only thing I can hear is, "Fire, fire, fire," and she hangs up. I get home as fast as I can. My neighbor Steve was already at my house, had my daughter up the block with the dog. She didn't know what was going on, she was scared. You know, she told me, she was like, "Dad, I feared for my life." I said, "Only thing I could do is reassure you, everything's gonna be fine." Her mom gets there, she's hugging her, so I go back to my house, I want to see the damage. Well, it's my roof, it's my sightings, my gutters, windows, miscellaneous, all the, you know, what we all have on our back patios, tables, chairs, my garage siding, window door. So this property at thirty-six thirty-six Edna Street has been sitting there for over two years. The homeowner has not shown any good intentions of trying to sow his loss. Unfortunately, this property next door has affected our quality of life. We know you're not the reason for this fire, but we know you can help us tear this property down. You are the electric officials, this issue has gone on too long. If this isn't a public nuisance, I don't know what is. If I get my wish of thirty-six thirty-six Edna torn down, I ask for the first option to purchase the property. Thank you for listening and for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Antoine Marsh, three six three two, Edna Street. Our home is where we have raised three of our daughters. Our oldest is a college graduate from U N O. Our middle is currently college athlete at College of St. Mary's and our youngest is an eighth grade honor student. On October twentieth, two thousand nineteen, I received a frantic call from our then eleven-year-old daughter. I was still at work when I got the call. In fear for her life and crying hysterically, I could not make out what she was saying. I stayed on the phone with her and grabbed my belongings and rushed home. I worked less than a half a mile from home. I pulled up to thirty-six and Edna Street where Ava was standing with our dog, distraught and afraid. The property at thirty-six thirty-six Edna Street is an eyesore. For the past two years, it is embarrassing when I'm giving directions to our home for a birthday party or congratulations drive-by celebration that we have been doing during the pandemic. I have been in communication with Mike Christianson, a city official, throughout this whole process. I'm not asking you to wave a magic wand, but if you live next door to this, you would want something done. The property located next to us at thirty-six thirty-six Edna Street is an eyesore and a big safety concern, and we are asking for the city to please tear it down. Thank you.
Can I make sure you please sign in too as well? Sorry, I didn't announce it. Okay.
Um, I'm Melissa Marsh Contreras, I live at thirty-six thirty-two also. I just want to say that, from my position, imagine I was hour away at college at this time, Prue State College, and I'm sitting in my first basketball meeting and I see my phone blowing up from my eleven-year-old sister who was sending me texts and calls saying that our house had caught on fire. Without no hesitation, I ran out of my first meeting to get back to Omaha as fast as I could. All I could hear where the thoughts going through my head was, "Do they have somewhere to stay tonight? Are we gonna be okay after this?" But my biggest thought was, "Is my little sister okay?" Physically, she was fine, but emotionally and mentally, she was scared and traumatized. She couldn't be near the house, let alone step foot inside of it, without feeling scared or crying because she, cause what she had went through hours prior. Now put yourself in our position and in our shoes and think to yourself, would you want this house still up? Because somewhere my family and I are standing, this house has only caused us problems in our own home and is a constant reminder of a traumatic experience that could have gone way worse. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out as well. That's, uh, um, important for, for us to hear. Public hearing is still open, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is still open on fourteen A. Seeing nobody else come forward, I will close the public hearing and I'll move on to fourteen A one. Resolution number two zero two one dash three two condemning the structures at thirty-six thirty-six Edna Street, Bellevue, six eight one four seven. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number two zero two one dash three two.
Second. Motion by Welch, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Mike, do you have any idea when that, uh, might happen, just to give people an idea?
They have an option to proceed on their own for thirty days. I'll work on getting bids prior to that, though.
Okay, all right, thank you. Item fourteen B, show cause hearing on proposed condemnation at seven oh eight and seven twenty East La Platte Road, Bellevue, six eight one two three. And again, I will open up the public hearing for fourteen B and we will start with, uh, Mike Christianson again.
Okay, again, I have a short clip I'd like to show and then we'll move on from there. This property on East La Platte Road, we'd had some minimum housing issues with it in the past prior to the twenty nineteen floods. Um, once the twenty nineteen floods came in, it pretty much did both structures on the property that were residential, uh, in an uninhabitable condition, obviously. Um, it appeared at, on the older farmhouse here that they had taken out of all the furniture and at one point here, you'll see an attempt where they started to remove some of the wall, that'd be about the flood level. And it's, uh, plastered in lath and decided just to kind of give up, so it's been sitting in this condition since the twenty nineteen floods. There's another structure adjacent to that, to the east, is as, also a residential property on this, on the same partial. Basically, it was just left in the condition that it was after the flood and remains so at this point in time. Both in uninhabitable condition. There's some other outbuilding structures on the property. Um, there's a garage that basically, as you can see, is not, not being used for its intended use. There's a lean-to in the back, it's not being utilized for anything, an old chicken coop and a machine shed off to the right of the, uh, grain bin. None of these structures are being utilized for their intended use at this time.
So Mike, will all of these structures be taken down? Is that what the plan is, if this is approved?
With the exception of the, the grain elevator or the-
Okay, thanks.
These La Platte from, you know, moving west, everybody that was involved in the flood has done a great job. They brought all their properties back into uh, pristine condition and one of the other residential structures that was just to the east of it was torn down and new structure's been uh, built on that property and just received its certificate of occupancy this week. So that whole area's been cleaned up. This is one of the first structures that you see coming in on the thirty-four corridor.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is open, is there anyone here wishing to speak on the show cause hearing, fourteen B? Anybody to speak on fourteen B, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and move on to fourteen B one. Resolution number two zero two one dash three three condemning the structures at seven oh eight through seven twenty East La Platte Road, Bellevue, six eight one two three. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one dash thirty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. He beat you, you're, you're just louder. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, Resolution number two zero two one dash three four, a resolution to approve extension and mor- of moratorium on act, on acting upon applications for any permits, zoning approvals, or zoning changes for any proposed solar plants and any related power generation facilities and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty-
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion we approve resolution twenty, twenty-one-dash-three-four.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, item fifteen B, resolution number two-zero-two-one-dash-thirty-five. A resolution approving park expenditure for sanitary improvement district number three-three-four Falcon Point in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion on, I'd like to ask a question. I'll approve resolution, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one, twenty-five-dash-three-five.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw, Councilman Cook.
Tammy, I got a question for you. Would this fit the classification what maybe would be considered like a regional park? Where, I mean, it's, it's a pretty big expenditure, I'm assuming they already have the land and stuff, so is this gonna be something, maybe Mr. Clark should answer that, sorry. Mr. Clark, I'll shoot this towards you. Would this be considered a regional park where if there's more homes being developed out there and some of the other homes be already out there, there's walkway paths and someone could get to it and not just a small little park with a swing and a slide on it? I'll ask that to Mr. Clark.
In, in my discussions, uh, with the planning department, uh, that is an accurate assessment. We are going to discuss another issue associated with parks later today. And, uh, prior to this meeting, the planning department and I had a conversation about exactly that subject matter and the answer is yes, we view that as a regional park.
Thank you.
Any more comments, questions? Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw to approve resolution number two-zero-two-one-dash-three-five. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen, current business. Sixteen B, approve the community development block grant, CDBG Community Revitalization Fund Policy and Procedures Manual. CDBG Program Specialist Finance Director. They're here if you have any questions, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen B as read.
Motion by Walsh, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen C, approve and authorize mayor to sign memorandum of understanding with Redwood USA LLC. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make motion we approve sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen D, approve updated employee handbook. Take a motion? Councilwoman Walsh?
I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Walsh, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign contract with HDR to finalize the master plan for American Heroes Park in an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for professional services with Lampre Neerson to review all parks and aquatic facilities in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by McCaw. Comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Doug, could I get you to maybe give us a little information over a quarter of a million dollars and, uh, could you just tell us a little about what we expect to get from it and where we will take it from when it's done?
I, I think that's a, a great segue into this study. The city of Bellevue currently maintains over seven hundred acres of park land. We have demands placed on the Parks Department on a regular basis to maintain and improve those properties. The city of Papillion just completed a study of how many parks they would like to have when they reach a population of fifty thousand. Uh, that park number is somewhere around thirty. We're at fifty-five and we're at sixty-three thousand. Maintaining and adequately putting amenities into these parks would be incredibly burdensome on the taxpayers. So we need an independent review of all the parks. What is the best use for the parks that we have? Are there higher and better uses for some of the properties that the city currently maintains? And, um, what are appropriate investments? The goal is to have a five-year plan that the city council and the citizens of Bellevue participate in and provide direction for, so we can, uh, work our way through that five-year plan and everybody understands the investments being made and why they're being made and the purposes they're being made. Right now, we, we have, uh, as I've said several times, fifty-five parks and everybody wants amenities in their park close to their house. And, uh, a simple swing set and playground setup will be over a hundred thousand dollars. And then you throw in ADA qualified and access and all the things we wanna do to make sure everyone in Bellevue can enjoy these amenities, the costs become astronomical. So, the goal is to organize and build our path forward with input from all citizens and elected officials, so we can, we can have a coordinated plan going forward.
And I appreciate the update and I, I think people out in the community will appreciate the further explanation. That, uh, fee then includes that public input, is that part of what they will be doing?
Oh, absolutely, that was one of the keys and one of the drivers in this. The city of Bellevue has grown over fifty percent since the last review of the parks has taken place. So there's over twenty-five thousand people who've come into Bellevue but have had no input into what the parks and recreation system look like. And also, some policies have changed as to how we, uh, develop parks, so the western reaches of Bellevue don't have, uh, little parks required to be in their neighborhoods. They are paying into a parks fund, but they are not having any parks in their neighborhood, so it's time we include everybody that's currently in Bellevue to have an opportunity and some input into how their park system is gonna be ran and the amenities that will be there.
And out in that south reach area, there was, in the prior parks master plan, uh, request to have a regional park out there and we prior councils bought land near the Eastern Nebraska Veterans Home and we've got over a hundred acres sitting there, so that area and proposed uses for that land would also be included in this.
Absolutely, um, it, I think the regional park idea is really kind of what's driving this discussion. Uh, more amenities, uh, more attractions in, in more regionally sized parks to create, um, more activity. And, and while green space is important, Bellevue is blessed with an interesting topography and green space oftentimes isn't a problem. But it doesn't mean it doesn't need to be managed and programmed and, and we develop a C, get this in the CIP, so we know where we're budgeting and where our investments are gonna be going forward.
Good, and, and I appreciate assessment and looking at everything and doing it comprehensively. I had some questions at first, but I appreciated you and the city administrator answering those about the annexations and all the additional changes that have taken place since the one, uh, that we currently have has been done. This also includes all of our swimming pools, is that accurate?
Correct, um, we have two, uh, aging swimming pools left in the inventory. One is in such shape that it will never be reopened and one is in such condition that it leaks eight thousand gallons of water a day. And we're trying to find those leaks now, so we can keep it in operation for the next three or four years while we implement the plan that we're designing now, if that makes sense.
It, it makes sense, it leads me to what I would have asked on, on the next item. And, and that is, if we're going to be doing an assessment and we're putting three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand into this, why are we looking at another separate contract for just an aquatic center?
Um, as we were looking at the cost of replacing the, the ru, the last two, uh, pools that are aging out of service, um, it became obvious that if the citizens of Bellevue and, um, the policymakers uh, had a good understanding of what a public-private partnership would look like and what a marketing plan would look like, we could develop a larger, more regional, um, water attraction that would fit nicely into Bellevue and address, um, more needs than just a local uh, swimming pool or a neighborhood swimming pool, which at today's costs, and I'm only guessing at today's cost because, uh, construction costs are going through the roof. Uh, if we were to replace the two pools that are aging out of service today, it'd probably be about four million apiece. To do it in a similar-sized pool and, uh, similar ties, size amenities in that pool, so if you can create a regional opportunity and economic value for the rest of the city with the same investment, um, we felt it was important to take a look at that.
And that would be i, i, more in-depth, is that the difference? Because we're already assessing the other pools and wha, what?
It would be more in-depth and it would also, uh, provide us an opportunity to look at a marketing plan and what, what is, um, what is marketable and what would a regional uh, facility have to look like? And I wanted to separate that out from the, the other study, so we could have an honest review of, you know, what does, what does a regional water park look like and what would it take to do a regional water park and if, if it was feasible?
Okay. A, a, a balanced study, sometimes when we hire contractors, they do what we want or what they think we want as an outcome. My concern is, our summers are getting shorter. We are down to maybe eight good weeks of swimming. Uh, the first week, water's too cold, kids don't wanna get in it very much. The last week slows down because they're going back to school, parents are taking them to buy clothes. And the teenagers who can go to the regional water parks, they're going to Platsmit, they're going to Papillion, they're going over to South Omaha to the swim park there. So if we build one, it seems like we're getting into a water park kind of arms race. We're competing with the others, they cost millions of dollars for what our past study said was only sixteen percent of Bellevue residents that even use our swimming pools and our water places now. So for a very small part of the population, we're investing millions of dollars for eight to at most ten weeks of the year. It just seems like we're putting a whole lot of money in something that sits there empty.
If, if we would operate a public-private partnership the same way we operate our current water, uh, facilities now, the swimming pools, um, I, your, your assessment I think would be very accurate. Um, in a public-private partnership, um, that pool, that system would be open longer and would have more amenities and have a greater attraction than, than what we currently provide. And just because we do the study doesn't mean, if we do the marketing plan and the marketing plan comes back and says this wouldn't work in this location, um, then I wouldn't recommend we do it. There's another factor in here that we, the, the entire nation experienced this year. And that is the fact that there are not enough swimming, um, lifeguards, there we go. Uh, there are not enough lifeguards in the United States to operate the pools and we in Bellevue were rotating, uh, times open and different, the two pools, the three pools that we had operational. Uh, we were rotating time and, uh, trying to give everybody an option of a decent time and maintain swimming lessons. We had a great conversation with the Boys and Girls Club. They were doing, they were struggling the same way we were trying to keep pools open, so as, as I'm looking this from a manager's point of view, I'm just trying to say, how can, how can we create more opportunity to enjoy a water environment with less exposure for the city and fewer lifeguards that the city has to go find? So this is an optionality question and I, in my communication with the administration, the desire to look at a marketing plan is, if you have good numbers and you have a good marketing plan, you have a better opportunity of finding that, um, partner on the private sector that says, I'll invest my money in Bellevue and Bellevue, you can invest some money and the citizens of Bellevue aren't on the hook for all of that um, expense and the park would be open longer and have more amenities, so but, I, i, is there a little bit of a, you know, an arms race in, in the water park? Uh, maybe so, but in, in the end, if our people are leaving Bellevue and spending money in another community, is that helping Bellevue? So, we, we wanna take an honest look at that, um, and, and provide insight for the policymakers.
Part of their, they'll, they'll do the market analysis on what the competitive nature is, so being the third largest city, and we hear this often from Offit that most of them go to Papillion because we don't have the amenity here. So the marketing analysis will also tell us what, what the need will, or what, what will drive that, that ad-brunt product. So if the marketing analysis comes back and says only sixteen percent of the public is gonna use, use the pool, that'll drive us in a different direction, but I think that's part of this, is that to eliminate the speculation that, that's only sixteen percent or versus what we hear from our partners at Offit, that they have to leave our community to, to have that service provided to them, so that helps us drive to the end. And as Doug has mentioned, this public-private partnership, there's a larger look at this, a larger dive into what the private sector will do with this same development.
And those partnerships I like, I, I just, I see a large investment by the taxpayers for a very short window of time, and even if they can keep it open longer than eight to ten weeks, the kids are in school, so there's, there's built-in limitations. And whatever study we have, I hope they take some of the past study that we did, the aquatic study that was done a number of years ago that said the sixteen percent was all that used it. And if, if those numbers need to be challenged, challenge them. I just want a very, uh, open and broad assessment, so we get honest information back.
That, I, I believe, Don, that, that's the goal of, of this study is to give the policymakers the information they need to assess whether this is a worthy investment or not. And the fact that we have two aging pools that, that are at the end of their useful life and, and does the city wanna spend four million dollars apiece to keep those open or is there a better investment? And that's, that's the goal of the administration and, and, uh, the Public Works Department is to come up with, what are our best options?
Right, good. Right. Good. Thank you for the...
If I'm not mistaken, I want the study also, uh, look into, uh, indoor/outdoor facility?
Correct. That's, that, so, and don't want to name a source here, but your public-private partnership would attract maybe a player that would also have a hotel tied to it, have the indoor portion of it, uh, where that's functional all year long, not only for our citizens, but also a regional draw as a tourist stop. And it goes into a grander center that if this is feasible, do we develop an entertainment district around that too? So a lot of food for thought if, if that works and the private companies need to see that study if it works for them. So they're not driving it for us. They're driving it, will this work? Will this market have that demand? For them to be a participant too. And then you take it beyond your summer months where you'd extend it into your winter months. So it'd be an all-year, all-year-round development.
Good. And that's what I've advocated for year-round, so it's not so limited.
Yep.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, so we're still on sixteen F. I have a motion by Burns, seconded by McCaw. Is there any further comments or questions? Okay, please vote on sixteen F.
All voting in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, recommendation to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Lampar Nielsen to enter into a market study for a regional water park in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Stenson?
Make motion. We approve sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Burns. Comments or questions on sixteen G? Please vote.
All voting in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you. Seventeen is the administration reports and those are given at the first meeting of the month and that will be October fifth. There is no closed session and if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn, well, think about it. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting in favor. Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.